This conference will now be recorded.
Oh, okay. Just making sure you're right. Oh, you're right. Thanks.
Thirty seconds, Sean.
Nothing like cutting it close, my friend.
I just, I park behind me. I was about to tell you he's got that spot.
Here you guys, ready?
Hello?
Clerk, please start the recording. Today is Wednesday, July ninth, twenty twenty five, and I'd like to call today's city council meeting to order. If we can all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, can I please get roll call?
Councilmember Fox.
Present.
Councilmember Casper. Here. Councilmember Boyle.
Present.
Councilmember Leah.
Present.
Councilmember Servini.
Present.
Mayor Strobin.
Here. Thank you, clerk. Clerk, can we please call up any public comments from the audience?
Al Filla.
Al Filla, three six zero one six Northwest Jenny Creek Road. Well, I guess I'm on to a different subject this week.
Yeah.
Good. Uh, but back to Meals on Wheels. Meals on Wheels is run by the greatest bunch of volunteers you ever did see. You know, I love, they take care of us senior citizens at Meals on Wheels. And by golly, you know, when they ask for something, they should get it because they're the people that run this town. They're the ones that are in Lions or the museum or whatever, you know, and evidently in this slip by, by me because I don't use, there's a table that's missing. And they're, they bring their own table to Meals on Wheels to set stuff up. You know, and the city can't afford to get them a table? Yeah, God. Anyway. Is that good enough? Okay, and well, okay, so last, last thing I got, which is something I brought up, uh, oh, a couple meetings ago, was, uh, rules for the parks. You know, there's none, the only place I know, and I might, maybe I'm wrong now because I haven't looked in a while, is out, out at the skateboard. It's got a whole bunch of rules, you know, no smoking, no drinking, blah, 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 blah. Well, you know, like to see some posted, especially down here at the amphitheater, you know, people are having a good time, but invariably, you know, people are smoking and drinking alcohol. You know, it just something has happened, but they should, I talked to the chief about it and he said, well, if it's not posted, you really can't expect us to go down there and, you know, roust people, you know? So anyway, you know, that's, that should be, but you should also put on that sign, no tree climbing. Because the other day there were some little kids out there and I thought it was a tornado caused by the roundabout. Cause I read on Facebook that roundabouts cause tornadoes, but it actually was kids climbed up this tree here. And they were just about no length, they were just going like, and Hannah had to go over there and, oh, I did, I, I was gonna have a big story about her climbing up and dragging it down, but that would have been a lie. But she went over, told them to get down and they went down. But anyway, no tree climbing in our, our famous street. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you.
Sandy Pearson.
I'm Sandy Pearson, a fourteenth Avon La Center. And, um, mayor, council, staff. I want to thank you for the clock we now have on Meals on Wheels. Things are running smooth and we know what time it is. And instead of a watch or something, we, we can look at it and there's no discrepancy and it sounds like a little thing, but when old people see something that's free and we have a time to go to it, they go. And, and they go early and then everybody gets mad and it sounds like a little thing, but it's a big thing. So the other thing that I wanted to comment on was, and I've heard scuttlebutt that mayor might have, um, some answers, is the piano table. Where it's gonna go, what we're gonna do with it. Uh, when you weren't here, I had a petition from all the Meals on Wheels people. We wanna know where it's at and, because we really loved it. And it's a work of love. It was. You want me to pass? Is that gonna come out sometime?
We, we've stopped doing, answering the questions with public. If, if you wanna talk about that, that we can take that, uh, any, a meeting during the week to discuss.
Okay, then I just wanna bring it up again. We're still concerned about it and, um, thank you again for the, the help that you do get. We complain a lot, but thank you.
And Sandy, you could reach out and we can arrange a meeting.
Absolutely. Well, I left a message. I'll leave another one.
Thank you.
Bruce Barnes.
Good evening, uh, mayor, council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak here. I'm a lifelong resident of, uh, Clark County. I'm here to urge you, uh, you know, there's been talk of Camas, Washougal, Richfield, La Center being encompassed by the city of Vancouver. And I'm here to tell you, it's gonna be the biggest mistake of your life. Biggest mistake. Um, they're bankrupting people in Vancouver. I live in Vancouver, just outside the city limits, and my property taxes are through the roof. I'm paying fourteen thousand dollars a year now in property tax. My uncle actually killed himself, uh, about three months ago over not being able to afford to live. Had thirty dollars at the end of the month. After all these bills were paid. So I'm urging you as lawmakers and city officials to think about what you do and how you do it. And, you know, this is a beautiful place out here. Vancouver's not such a beautiful place anymore. I mean, there's not a square inch of that area that has not been developed. And when you talk about a ten billion dollar bridge and a ten dollar toll to go across that bridge, because there's no jobs in basically Washington here, all the way out into this area, very few, most people work in Oregon. That's about a twenty thousand eight hundred dollar a year tax to the working person that's gotta cross that bridge and back. And then they gotta pay Oregon tax on top of that, right? So they're being taxed to go pay tax and they have no vote. No vote at all. And I did it for years as an electrician, but I'm urging you to think and be very strategic about what you do in this beautiful area here. Don't destroy it. You know, you need jobs in a community. I get it. People need housing. I get it. But, you know, Tom McColl in Portland, he had a great saying years ago, right? It's a great place to visit. Don't move here. You know, was the guy wrong? I don't think so. Because looks what, look, look what's happened to Portland, Oregon. It's, it's like a zombie apocalypse, number one. Vancouver's the same way. They just spent forty five million dollars on homelessness. And it's not gotten any better. It's actually worse. They're encouraging people to come there because of all the programs, the lackluster law enforcement because of our state legislation. And a prosecuting attorney that does not do his job. And I'll tell you, he doesn't do his job. There's a person that ripped off my girlfriend for seventy thousand dollars and forty thousand dollars in cash. He also ripped off an elder for one point three million. He's into the community, one point six million. Still running around. So I would just urge you to be very strategic about your development, you know, create jobs in your community, because I've never met a poor man that created any jobs. You know, it's people that have money. And, you know, make them family wage jobs, but also engage your, your tribal community over here that have gotten some massive tax breaks to help your community out as well. They've got lots of money. They make a lot of money there. People can't stay out of that place. I, I don't drink, I don't do drugs and I don't gamble. So I go there for the events that they have and there's been some great concerts and I've enjoyed them. And the people there that, that are the council, they're very nice. You know, my dad was strategic at helping put that place in, in place. He's done a lot for the community. But I'm just saying, I'm urging you, please, just be strategic and, and look out for your elderly. I mean, I'm hearing the people from the food bank here. If you guys need a table, I'll buy you a table. Even though I'm not from this community, because we gotta take care of our elders. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brian Beasley.
Yeah, my name's Brian Beasley, uh, three one one six Northeast Beasley Road. I'm really kinda concerned about the roundabout you're proposing up on, uh, La Center Road. Uh, the roundabout you got here in town with the ADA expects and all that stuff, as you can't even drive through here at the speed limit. With the ADA stuff, I mean, I've spent a lot of money on tires and suspension on my rig. An ADA ramp and a roundabout up there is gonna create nothing but trouble. I really wish you would seriously think about, instead of spending the money on a roundabout, you've already got two lanes, three quarters of the way up the hill. Go up to the top of the hill, open that up, get three lane, or two lanes all the way up. You'll open everything up over the hill. Everything will be fine. If there's, I know you, your last meeting, you said that, um, Richfield was the third largest or fastest growing city in Washington State. Well, let Richfield take care of it. We don't need to take care of it. It's just, just, just a thought. I mean, add a little bit of snow, figure that roundabout up there, a little bit of snow, what's gonna happen? You're, you got all kinds of semi trucks running up there. It's just gonna create habit. I just wish you'd really seriously think about it. And your proposal with, what was it? The WSP? Is seriously think about where the money can be spent best. An extra lane over the top of the hill would just relieve everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kimberly Elbin.
Good evening. I'd like to speak to the people. That's what this is about. This is our meeting. Kimberly Gohean Elbin. Uh, boy, I was all organized and here I go again. Hold on. I gotta do this right or I mess up. It's quite a big deal here for me. So I'm gonna mention that the, um, public, the public must at least call in or, and listen weekly to the Clark County council meetings, the Clark County Planning Commission and the Board of Health meetings. Uh, there's a lot of stuff online that you can look at. If you do not, you cannot complain to what they are doing to your absent behalf. Uh, think of your hard earned tax dollars and actual survival. I received a registered letter last week from the Washington State Department of Agriculture from a complaint to the Clark County Health Department. The complaint was that I was a company selling beef tallow as pet food and that I sell beef broth for pets. And that I sell beef bones as pet food. I replied to the ag department and stated that I have never sold tallow or beef broth as pet food. I do sell bones and will now cook them for pet sale, or I can do them raw and spend ninety dollars and have this much paperwork with the state. The point here is that in my line of duty to serve God, family and country, I have haters, those who cannot put truth forward, or in this case, uh, excuse me, so there we go. In this case, uh, they, they did tell a lie. So as the complaint, the complaint was an absolute lie and as a mean of, means of retaliation from this person or these people. Just after the June twenty fifth council meeting that I held signs for and had the public here. This council did not want that to happen. I think they think that they, uh, uh, told the public enough, but I'm, I was here on record. It's a stated fact. I was here on record stating the public isn't here and they do not know, and you didn't. I put on record that this was retaliatory and I'll state now that if it happens again under false pretenses, I will file a lawsuit and the complaints will be my evidence. As I will be a targeted victim and, um, I consider it in retaliation for the work that I do. Um, I also wanna say that the Planning Commission on, uh, June tenth was, had deemed that most citizens did not know about the developments and they didn't. And they actually sent a memo to the council. Well, two council members didn't get that, that memo that you, we didn't know. This was back in June tenth, mind you. Also, it was kind of chaotic because they have two recordings, but I wanna let the people know that you can stand up. This is your government. This is your business. You need to do it now or they're gonna develop.
Thank you.
Mayor, there's no more cards from the audience.
Okay, thank you, clerk. Uh, any public comments from those calling in, please press star six to unmute yourself. State your name and address for the record.
Hello?
Any callers, clerk?
I'm here. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. State your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Carmen De Leon in Vancouver, Washington. I'm at eighteen seventeen East Mill Plain Boulevard. And I appreciate you, uh, uh, letting me speak here because, you know, we're all living here in Clark County. And I enjoyed hearing the pledge of allegiance because, you know, they put up a fight about just saying something so simple in our, uh, Clark County. And, um, it should be welcomed in our, uh, uh, what are the meetings? So anyways, um, I've been getting retaliatory, uh, behavior from Clark County. Will Fuentes in particular, you remember, I talked about him wanting to urbanize your location, all of it, and I'll tell you why. It's because of the city of Vancouver wants to urbanize all of Clark County because they wanna become bigger than Tacoma. They wanna be able to say, oh, look, Seattle's the biggest city and then Vancouver, not Tacoma. So they wanna outgrow Tacoma by swallowing you guys up. So, um, like I said before, if you think this is bad, this ain't nothing yet. In other words, mayor, your job would be gone. All you city council would be obsolete if Vancouver gets its way. So it's scary. And that's why I've asked you, please go to Clark County Council because apparently they're all for it. Will Fuentes, I'm telling you today provoked me after I kindly said, and I don't know how much you understand about mental illness, please don't provoke me. I have PTSD. And boom, you know, come on. Uh, where's the human decency and kindness? That's why I said, there's no humanity in Vancouver. Is that what you want? So people, please go to this city, I mean Vancouver, uh, sixth floor over there at, um, uh, Clark County Council and let them know that, um, they can't have your city. You guys aren't up for sale. And just because I hate bringing only bad news, I do wanna say it was a nightmare in Sacramento. And you guys want logging, so grow some hemp and be the only place in the country that can sell, uh, fireproof, uh, firework stands, uh, locally that, and you won't have any more fireworks going on fire at, at first sale stands. Because we grow enough hemp and like I said, it grows like three or four times the yield in the same amount of time. So yeah, keep the logging industry alive by making something like that, something nobody else has. Hemp. No more burning up your buildings. We sell hemp. And I'm just saying because, you know, as a member of the public, we're not trying to hurt anything. We're trying to, you know, help things. And to be afraid to go and talk at city council in Vancouver and Clark County Council, that's where we become afraid of our own government. And that's what we were warned about. And so I, I appreciate you guys, because you know what? I'm not afraid of La Center. So God bless you. Uh, and, you know, let peace reign on all of us. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other callers calling in, please press star six to unmute yourself. State your name and address for the record. Any other callers, clerk?
None that have unmuted themselves.
Okay. Are there any public comments to be read?
There's no comments to be read tonight.
Thank you, clerk. Next up is the consent agenda. There are no, uh, requests for any items to be removed. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Motion passes. Thank you, council. We do have a presentation tonight. Hmm. Uh, La Center Arts Council presentation will be done by Chrissy Dubois. Oh, I thought you were, Sandy, you're not gonna step up? Oh, all right. All right. Perfect.
Can I pronounce it Dubois?
Dubois, sorry.
So, um, I am Chrissy Dubois and I'm the director, our executive director of La Center Arts Council, sorry. Um, our executive director is out of town right now, so I'm presenting for us. Um, city council members and citizens of our beautiful town. Um, I wanna give everybody a brief update about, uh, La Center Arts Council and what we, what we've been doing. Um, with your support and encouragement, in the past two years, we have achieved nonprofit status, a variety of arts workshops, and those will be continuing. Um, collaborating with La Center Schools for the Middle School's Hawks Landing mural, which was very for, yeah, my heart was very happy. Um, cooperating with La Center United to offer painting classes for youth and parents. Face painting at National Night Out and our Days for the Kids, January General Meeting Dessert and Art Raffle, which, uh, got us very many members into La Center Arts Council. Um, two very successful arts fairs. And we still have our bristles and nibs going on with Dan Masterson. And, uh, that's on the first and third Saturday at one o'clock, first and third Saturdays at one o'clock, and the second and fourth Tuesdays at nine o'clock at the Wheel Club. So anybody, if you have arts and crafts, it doesn't have to be artistic, it can be crafts. Um, come join us. It's really fun. Um, excuse me. Collaboration and coordination with Kallit's Tribe Civic Leadership, La Center School District. And with help from the city council, um, and the city of La Center, I should say, and all of you, we will continue to be nurtured because you all will be continued to be nurtured. Because we're here to stay. That means that we must be part of the long-term vision for the city of La Center. And where will we fit into that in the years to come? Our vision for the future is to have a permanent home here in the heart of La Center. Uh, we, we request that you keep us this, keep us in the mix as you hone your development plan. Build a community that has a place for all citizens to fully participate and add their creativity to the vitality, vitality, sorry, of our growing city. We also are in collabora, collaboration with the city regarding various art installations around the city. More will be revealed on that very soon. We thank you for your continued interest and support in providing cultural, cultural enrichment and arts education for the La Center community.
Perfect.
That's it. Any big questions, maybe?
Yeah, any questions?
I had seen some folks post some things on Facebook asking about like doing a mural on the TDS building. Did you see anything about that? Have you guys, I mean, I think it's a great idea. Cause I've, I mean, that building.
Think it's a wonderful idea and we can't comment on that.
Sure, I'm sure. Yeah, obviously reaching out to them, that's a whole nother ballgame.
Absolutely, and, and more to come, more to come on that.
Sounds so fun. Yeah, awesome.
Yeah, we're excited about that.
Yeah, that would be super cool. Yeah, drive through town and see that. Yeah, be fun.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks for all your support. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
We're gonna change it up just a little bit here. Okay. Next up is council comments. Councilmember Fox.
Why are you doing that?
You'll see.
You're funny. Okay. Hello, sorry. I guess we're switching up the schedule a little bit. Um, good to see everyone. Glad to see, uh, just, uh, just support from, from our regulars and people that are coming. I love everybody to encourage everyone to speak their voice. Um, I just also wanna remind our community that we are a council that was voted on by the people. We are paid very, very little. So in, in a sense of, we're not here for the money and so there's nothing funny going on, because we're not doing anything funny for free. So, uh, we, we all have, you know, strong jobs. We all hold strong professions or others are retired and put a lot of, um, but has a great background. You know, we all come from a great background, but we're all just locals, you know, trying to do our best. Um, there are no surprises. Things have been talked about. And, and you just gotta, you know, keep coming back and keeping notes and keeping track of things so that you don't, uh, think that something wasn't talked about, that it was. Um, and also spreading, you know, real information and not false information to, uh, get everyone excited over things that are, are not true. Um, but, you know, that's politics in, in a sense, um, but, um, we all are small towns, so just wanna keep it respectful and have it be, you know, something that we all understand that this is a process. And you can all run at any time as well and be a part of this process. So that's the beautiful thing about a democracy. So, uh, uh, Brian, I like your suggestion. Um, I'm curious to see what WSP would say about that. Um, you know, the roundabout isn't like going in tomorrow, so that's good news. You know, it's just a proposed plan. Yeah. Sure. But yeah, I liked your idea. Yeah. Sure. Yeah. Yeah. But I like your idea. So, um, yeah, anyway, just thanks for your comments and that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Casper.
Uh, good evening. Um, trying to decide what it is that I wanna talk about. Whether, uh, it is my time, so I'll just, I'll take a couple minutes. I'll try not to make it too long. Um, yeah, a lot of controversy lately. Um, you know, it's a circle on a map that hasn't been built yet. There were no bulldozers that came into town on Thursday morning. So hopefully it calms some folks down a little bit. Um, you know, I still think that some people drive too fast on La Center Road. So in my opinion, if there's a roundabout there, maybe they should slow down and negotiate it the right way. I don't know. Just a thought. Uh, I had a meeting the other day on Monday with two citizens. I thought it was very productive. Um, I think we came to a, to an understanding somewhat. Um, we don't always agree on everything, but I think we agreed on more things than what we both, we all thought about when we went into the meeting. So, um, I enjoyed that. There's still some stuff that's coming out on, on Facebook that is blatantly not true. And there's some stuff that's coming out that is a lot of opinion based on, based on false information and some facts that are occurring. But I do know that all the information is out there. If you choose to look for it in the right spot, you can find it. So, um, I think I'll just leave it at that. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyle.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, welcome, mayor. I'm just joking. Anyways, not funny. Okay. I, that's leading me into something here. Uh, I, you know, last meeting was pretty crazy and I think that it got quite out of hand. And, you know, I sit up here with each and every one of these people and I respect the hell out of them. I treat all of their opinions, decisions with respect. They work their butts off to get to these places. We don't always agree a hundred percent on every single issue, but that's not how life is. And we as Melissa said earlier, you know, we are all just citizens of this community, and you know, sorry to poke fun at you, Mary, it was just kind of, I just wanted to lead into this, but it's, you know, we come as you, we're here to represent you, you know, we want to hear your opinions, you know? And it's unfortunate that sometimes information doesn't always get broadcasted the way people want it to be, but that doesn't mean it's not broadcasted. And sometimes we have to dig a little bit differently than we're used to, to get those types of answers, but yeah, I guess that's my main point is that, you know, each and every one of us here are looking out for everyone's best interests. We have no hidden agenda. We just want what's best. We like driving in town every day, seeing the flags up on the bridge, watching the kids play at the ballpark. It's all the same as each, as each and every one of you, so I just want to say thank you to all of my colleagues and the staff for all their hard work. That's all I got.
Thank you. Council member Leah.
Oh, thank you for everyone for being here this evening. I'd like to share a little bit about the AWC, which means All Washington Cities Conference, that council member Casper and Mayor Strobin and myself went to last week, because these are very important conferences. We learn a lot. There was a lot of, there's so many classes, you can't even go to all of them. Some of the ones I went to was Strategies to Combat Food Shortages, Infrastructure Funding Opportunities, Exploring the Needs of Small Rural Communities, Roundtable of Counselors, and Building Resilient Cities, Navigating Cybersecurity Threats, et cetera, et cetera. I went, we all did, we went to class after class after class. This is all because we're trying to learn, and we want to do the best that we can for our cities. Then Monday night, I went to the museum board, and I think that the museum is a very, very important part of La Center, and it's just very fun to go look at all the different history, and I see we got a couple people right here that are, have been very involved in that museum, and I intend to get more involved. Then last night I went to the planning commission meeting, and I'm very glad I did because it helps me to understand more stuff that we're going to actually talk about tonight. I'm thankful for the fire queues that came out and put out a brush fire that was in the La Center bottoms, that that got taken care of, so. Other fun stuff for La Center is the music in the park. We've had two great Saturday nights. Last week was Creedence Clearwater Tribute Band. Very, very fun. So I just encourage people to attend these fun events that we do for the city to make, make it really special, and I grew up in a little tiny, much tinier than this, town in Iowa, so I like the little tiny, the small town feel. We're not really supposed to respond to people that say stuff, but I had never heard anything ever that Mr. Barnes mentioned that we're going to consolidate with Vancouver? No. No, I've never heard that rumor, so anyway. Yeah, I'm just, thank you for coming tonight, and try to stay cool. I hope everybody here has some way to have air conditioning or at least a big fan. So, that's it.
Thank you. Council member Serbini.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you each and every one of you for coming again this week. We always enjoy hearing your comments, your feedback, your concerns, and taking that into consideration as we plan and move ahead and try to make the best decisions possible. So please, I encourage each and every one of you, if you don't come, call in. You know, take every possible opportunity to be involved and engaged in the activities, check the website, look at the agendas, and use your opportunity. I mean, that's, that's what each of us are here in America for, and if we don't get engaged, it's our own fault, and oftentimes, just as our last meeting, until particular issues come before us that impact us directly, oftentimes that becomes the driver that then truly brings the community forward to get engaged. So it's not necessarily a bad thing. I mean, we're never all going to agree on issues. You know, that's America. But at least we're here to listen and learn from each of you because each of you have a different perspective, and it's opportunities for us to delve into those concerns and, and truly make sure we're taking everything into consideration, so thank you, one and all.
Thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure. Yeah, yeah.
I also wanted to add, I forgot to say this, that there was a wonderful article in The Reflector on Deputy Frazer in his background here, and I just wanted to say it was a beautiful story, and we're so blessed to have somebody with such a beautiful heart who really transformed his whole professional career to become a police officer and to be of service to the people. And now we get to have him here in our small town, so read it, it's like over three different pages, and it was very nice, so take the time to read that. Thank you.
He's a great deputy. Thank you for that.
I am grateful for those who attended and provided constructive and respective feedback regarding the future of La Center. What I heard during the last city council meeting's public comment was an abundance of comments that lacked the correct information. Upon further research, it appears most of these comments stem from posts being made on the La Center Families Facebook page. I hear your concerns, and I appreciate your feedback, and understand the need to protect the future of our quaint town. I share the same understanding. What I will not stand for is the misinformation being shared and encouraged between residents. It is causing unnecessary concern and panic over issues that do not exist. The intersection of La Center Road and Timmin Road has been in valuation since 2018, and the level of service continues to decline. The intersection is projected to be at a failing level of service in the, in the near future. As the city continues to grow, it will have an impact on this intersection. The anticipated growth impact is not only a result of growth within the city, but also from the growth outside of La Center. The city has included the installation of a signal or a roundabout at this intersection as a possible solution to the expected efforts of growth on our road infrastructure. All proposed possibilities for a failing intersection will be evaluated. The roundabout is not a guarantee. It is only a suggestion. Our city staff will be taking feedback into consideration about other possibilities at the intersection of La Center and Timmin Road. If we do not act now or plan now, it'll be too late by the time that comes. I also recognize many residents have concerns regarding the lack of notification for the subarea plan. The planning of the subarea plan has taken place over the past two years. It has been voted on since 2019's budget. This is not new. Throughout this, the city has maintained complete transparency surrounding the project and engaged in a variety of community engagement activities. These activities include open public houses, community advisory committee meetings, focus groups, mailed notices, and tabling sessions. All information and notices are posted in a timely manner across a variety of platforms. By using multiple platforms, including the official City of La Center Facebook and webpage, local newspapers, billing messages, reader boards, and bulletin boards, we try to reach as many residents as possible. Notices are also placed in frequent areas such as the La Center Library, the post office, and even the Wheel Club Community Center. If you have feedback for platforms and outreach methods you would like to see, please let us know. The city council meetings on the second, fourth Wednesday of each month are open and available to all citizens, not just those living within city limits. We want to hear from you. Our council and staff truly appreciate the citizens who show up to each meeting to stay informed and provide feedback. We encourage all residents of La Center to apply for an open city council position, and if you live outside of city limits, consider applying for a position on the Clark County Council as we work very closely with county to follow all state regulations. The city also complies with All Open Public Meetings Act, RCW 42.30, and Public Records Act, RCW 42.56. Rules and regulations. If there are a specific topic or project you'd like more information on, I strongly welcome you to speak with our staff at La Center City Hall to request the most up-to-date and accurate information. You can also do this on the web, on our website, and it's anonymous. You will have to pay a small fee for the paper or the print, but you can do it anonymously. The city of La Center is also required to comply with all yearly audits from the Washington State Auditor's Office. There has been no reports of fraud or embezzlement. And I repeat that, no fraud or embezzlement. The city of La Center takes claims of embezzlement and fraud very seriously. I encourage anyone with evidence to support these claims to please visit the La Center Clark, Clark County Sheriff's Office or the Washington State Auditor's Office so they can further investigate these claims. A city council meeting is for council members to discuss and make decisions for the city. While there is public input and opinions, which we welcome, we will not tolerate threatening manners or screaming over each other. We give each of you respect and deserve it in return. If you cannot adhere to those simple principles, then you will be asked to leave. This one's the hard part for me to read to you guys, because this is stuff I don't like. If you know me very well, I don't even like to be called mayor. But I need this to get out because I've read some very nasty comments about me, and none of them are true. I've never been one to brag or talk about what I've done during my time as mayor, but after reading some of the posts and a few conversations later, I believe it's time to let residents know the mayor that they elected. The last seven years I've been up this dais, I've constantly fought for the residents of the city, even at the expense of a not-so-nice-guy reputation. I've argued about the spending, which showed deficits of negative 350 to negative 1 million every year since 2018, the loss of our police officers, the lack of a relationship with our neighbors, the Kallit's Indian Tribe, and the absence of real economic revenue streams. Since becoming mayor, I've brought police services back to the city, formed an excellent relationship with the tribe, even signed a new IGA, turned our deficits into positives, and now have multiple streams of revenue in the works for the city. I volunteer with the Lions, worked the Fourth of July Stand, the Lions Easter Pancake Breakfast, have coached Little League and Soccer. I run the Christmas Festival, assist with the R Days Festival. I sponsor many of the events, including each of those mentioned, plus the La Center Teen Pageant. I even personally paid for the fireworks at last year's Christmas party, or Christmas party, yeah. Santa House Calls is my own event, and to date, we've helped out over more than 60 families in the last three years. 60 families. I make a little under $12,000 a year in which I invest into my children's future. All the trips, lunches, dinners are out of my own personal pocket. I buy the city employees hams for Thanksgiving and popsicles for the public works in the summer. I've paid for my trips to DC and the state Capitol, where we have received over $12 million in funding. I sacrifice massive amounts of family time so that La Center is safer and has a future. Now, none of this, what I have just read to you, could be possible without this council or the city staff. Without them, I'd just be another man yelling from a soapbox trying to make a difference. Each one of these people up here give everything to this city, just like I do. We do this because we want to make a difference and make sure that our families, your families, have a great place to live. Now I hope you have a better understanding of the type of mayor you have elected, one that does care and sacrifices a lot for the people and the city, because what I have said here is only a fraction of what I or we do for the city we call home. Moving forward, all concerns or questions regarding city matters should be brought to us at City Hall directly. I understand it can feel difficult to maintain a trustworthy relationship between residents and their locally-elected officials in a sea of misinformation, which is why I encourage you to engage with us directly. If you still have questions after hearing this, please come to City Hall or call us. Thank you for making La Center a better place to live every day.
Thank you. First time ever. Okay, next up is the attorney's report. Janine, are you with us?
I am with you. Can you hear me okay?
I can.
Okay, well, after that presentation, I have no, nothing to report. It is a pleasure to be working with the city. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the city attorney? All right, well, Janine, thank you for being here tonight. I appreciate it, and I know this council does too. We do have some reports tonight. Let's see, we've got the Community Development Public Works Staff Report. Ms. Tracy Coleman will be presenting. Tracy, are you ready?
Always. Okay, so I'll first start talking about council on our Streets and Facilities operation. The operation crew recently repaired a sinkhole that was on Heritage Loop Trail, and so we had to do a temporary patch. There was a washout underneath the trail, and then this week we're putting in the asphalt, a permanent patch. We also have staff working on the downtown area to prep, to prepare for R Days. They'll be painting curbs, making some repairs for some worn crosswalks, so on and so forth, for the general maintenance to make it look nice when people come into town for the parade, so on and so forth. In regards to the parks and grounds, a splash pad is up and running and is getting a lot of use this year. It's open from 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM for the remainder of the summer. In regards to our wastewater operations, we have added some extended time for processing our solids because we are reaching some processing capacities for our fan press that's currently at our wastewater plant. So we have the staff on a schedule change that they're working actually seven days a week to keep up the processing at the plant. So we have people that are changing shifts, so I just want to bring that to your attention. And then we're also looking at some cost-effective strategies to minimize the risk and improve performance during some high winter flows that are going to be upcoming in the winter months. It doesn't seem like it's, it's, you think in the middle of the summer right now like winter, but it comes fast before you know it, so in three, we have to figure something out in three months to be prepared for the winter. So with that being said, I'm going to be making a few trips to some different municipalities that the mayor has visited as well, and looking at some options for our wastewater plant. The technician, we had come out to inform us, we have some obsolescence of our UV system. The UV system, I want to make sure you understand, is up and operational. It's not, not running, but it's operational, but it is also becoming obsolete, so it's hard to get parts for it, so on and so forth. So those are things that we're going to be looking at to make sure that we stay up and running. And we are in all compliance of the NPDES permit limits, so there's no concerns there, but we want to make sure that we stay within those limits. In regards to our engineering, we have our Fourth Street Widening Project and the Breezy Creek Culvert Grant Project that you guys know is funded. Right now, we're reviewing the qualifications for an engineering service to do our inspections on that project, and we'll have those, those probably finish the review by tomorrow, and then we'll probably have something coming out to council in August for approval of that contract to move forward. On the Shared Use Path, the city staff plans to use TIF dollars to start this project to go into construction next year. You'll also be seeing, and this is the Shared Use Path that's going over Pacific Highway and the narrow, the narrow bridge area over there by K, it's a K subdivision? So you'll be seeing some signs go up there. We're going to change the speed limit on Pacific Highway. It's going to be reduced, so you'll see some pedestrian bike signs, you're going to see a sign showing of the project that's coming for next year, and then again, you'll see a crosswalk that's going across there at K subdivision, so people can go to the park. And again, reduce speed, you'll be seeing that coming up, so.
Are rendering that will be, I mean, I'm sure at some point we'll get to see one of the path?
It's actually going to be on the board, posted for all the public to see. Yeah, it's about a four to, four by six or four by eight foot board that'll be out there, picture board for everybody to see.
Awesome.
And then in regards to our public storm system, we have a consultant that has submitted the 80% design. I've shared this in the past, but we're also trying to find, find grant fundings for this project. We're attending some seminars to try to find some grant funds, so that's happening up in the, this next month. In regards to our building department, Thailand, Thailand, ha ha. Highland Terrace Phase Two has three homes under construction. Stevens Hillside has 12, Lockwood Meadows has 15, and Urban Meadows has 14 homes under construction. In code enforcement, there's currently 35 open cases, so people do realize we now have a code enforcement officer. 35 open cases. The oldest case is only from August of 2023, so, and she's working on getting those closed rather quickly, so I'm pretty, pretty impressed with who we hired. In regards to the community development, we actually have 51 new residential that totaled to date, 102 other, and again, what the other is, is And again, what the other is, is roofing, ride away, mechanical plumbing permits. We have two hundred and thirty total applications that are in process, and then thirty-four land use submittals to date. Last year, we only had thirty-seven land use submittals for the entire year to date. Just at the end of May or end of June, we have thirty-four. So we're already almost up to what we had last year at the end of the year. So I want to bring that to your attention because that comes into play with another item that's on the agenda for tonight. And that's all I have. If any council members have any questions?
Any questions? I do want to bring up something there, Tracy, before we go further past that. I think some things that need to be brought out a little bit to the public as well. So I'll start with the wastewater. It's not detriment, but we are, we are experiencing some problems. The plant is going to need some, not repairs, but upgrades to it in the next year to two years. And we're looking for alternatives. As a matter of fact, at that AWC meeting, I attended the Kennewick's new facility. Absolutely hands down amazing. Now, we're not sure if it'll work here, but it'll save the public quite a bit of money if we can make it work. But we are actively looking for other alternatives to sustain the plant in the future, right? It's twenty years old, so there's, equipment is not made after a certain amount of time. And so everybody, I keep hearing is six to eight million dollars, and I'm challenging people to find us better costs, so. And we're also communicating with the tribe as well about wastewater, so. Which they will actually help us with, with some of these costs as well, just so you know. So that'll be coming over the next few months to you guys, just be aware of it. The other thing is on the, the shared use path going out towards Riverside there from K's place. It's dangerous. It's scary for anybody that's walking, you know? And, and we've tried to address this for quite a while, and we, we actually came up with throwing some signs up and doing exactly what Tracy presented tonight. We've received grant money, and we are seven fifty shy. And we're going to continue to see if there's any grants going forward. If we do not receive a grant, I'm not waiting for somebody to die at this road. So can we mute that, please? So we're not going to wait for, to die. Oh, oh, sorry, Skip. I'm sorry, buddy. Can you mute that for me? You know, I love you.
You be you, Skippy. You be, you be you.
I don't want to wait for somebody to get killed on this road. So I've told Tracy and it'll come before you guys that we need to take that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of TIF, right? Is it TIF funding to finish it off? So that's why she's saying it'll be coming next year, so just, just be aware. There will be some more development coming on that as well. Sorry, Tracy, I wasn't trying to steal your thunder. I just thought the council should be aware of some of the stuff that is coming at them. So any further questions for Tracy?
No, except to say good job.
Yeah, it's always busy, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the moral of the story, if a city doesn't plan ahead, it's just a big shit show, right?
Pretty much.
Yeah, with all aspects. In this case, a massive shit show, it sounds like.
All right. Thank you.
It's always good to stay ahead on projects, especially that one.
I got your point.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, let's see, next up, oh, Tracy, that's right. The Hearing Examiner's Professional Service Agreement. This will be presented by Tracy Coleman. Again, Tracy?
Yeah, I just want to touch base on the, the Public Works Report, add something to what you were saying. Since I've been here for a year, I have been, I dove into the general sewer plan. And after looking at that, it was made, it was made obvious to me that there was some work that needed to be done at the wastewater plant. I have been reporting that every month. So if people want to go back and see what I've been reporting as far as pumps being replaced, obsolete parts, flow questions, different schedules to try to keep our flow under control. That's been announced every month. We've been talking about that. It's also in the report that's online if anybody wants to look that up. So there, there is a concern, and we need to address it, and we're working towards that, just so everybody knows.
Right. Is this, I just, yeah, no, please. Is this something that is manageable for foreseeable future for us to maintain this?
Absolutely. It's, everything's manageable at a cost. So we're trying to figure out what's the most cost effective way, because what we don't want to do is come in and raise rates. We know that we're evaluating our rates right now due to the fact that there was a number that was provided a few years back. And how that was provided, you really should be doing your sewer rates based on your water flow, and it was not done that way. So we're looking at that right now. Hence, if you have a big commercial company that's in here and they use a lot of water for production, and let's say it's a concrete plant, they're using water for the concrete, right? But you have an eighty-year-old, and I say eighty-year-old, that's not the year old, eighty, eighty-year-old grandmother that's out there that's in a single family home. I do not believe that that person should be paying the same as a concrete company, a flat rate. I think that it should be based on your water usage because that's what's going down your drain, and that's what we're treating. So that's what we're looking at. We're working with Clark PUD to look at the different water usage within the city, and we'll, we'll look at that at that time. So we've been in process and looking at that for the last six months.
Good enough. Thank you. Everything's very expensive with that. Everything's very expensive with everything. I don't think there's anything cheap anymore at all, no. You know, you got a great staff that's staying ahead of the curve or trying to. Just keep in mind, you know, things can happen. You know, it's, it's part of being human, I guess, you know, so mistakes and all that. Okay, Tracy?
Okay, so, thank you. So I'm presenting to the council an action request for a professional service agreement for a hearing examiner. We do currently have a professional services agreement in, and on staff, on record. And basically, that was with Joe Turner. He does our public hearings, and we signed that agreement with him in December of two thousand twenty-two. We have not had the need to have a backup hearing examiner because we've been able to work around his schedule, scheduled time off for vacation, so on and so forth. But with our additional application flows that have come into the city, as I shared with you at my presentation, we're already at almost the full level that we had last year. And so we have a need with Joe going on vacation to be able to have a backup. In order to do that, we have to have a contract in place. So I'm requesting that we sign a backup hearing examiner contract so we have some redundancy if needed, and that way if we have a scheduled hearing, we can keep with our schedule and keep our projects on task. So with that being said, this is a contract that offers backup for the hearings to be scheduled, and there is no additional budget impact to the city for this.
What was the name again?
It is with Daniel Kern, the Law Offices of Reeves Kern's PC.
Thank you. Any questions? Any comments?
So you're talking about this is a backup, so there still is the original person? And if we can't reach him, then we get a hold of the backup?
It's, it's an on-call contract, so if our current hearing examiner is not available, let's say for instance, he has a time off for a medical reason, or if he has time off for vacation, or he decides to step down, we have a backup that can slip into that position to keep our hearings on schedule. Yeah.
Good.
But it is on-call only.
Yeah, what was it to, to do? Is it a class one? I can't remember. For the hearing examiner, it's like six months or something you have to wait. What was that again? Currently?
No, that was, that was a class three or class fours. You have, it takes you, it's up to six months to go through the entire process of a land use application, up to five to six months. So we just want to make sure that we stay on schedule, because if we can't get the schedule in there, we don't want to delay that at all.
Well, Mayor, I move to authorize approval of the contract with Hearing Examiner Daniel Kern's of Law Offices Reeves Kern's PC on an on-call basis.
Second. It's been moved second and third. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, Tracy. And I look up at you, Jim, because that's your former city attorney when you were mayor. Yeah.
Mine too.
Oh, yours too, yeah. Yeah, sorry. Sorry. All right. We do have an ordinance tonight. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero four Public Works Operation Facility Rezone. Mr. Brian Cass will be presenting this. Brian, you with us?
I am. Can you hear me all right?
We can.
Excellent. So before the council this evening is a Type Four Zone Change Application. In this case, the city is the applicant, and this is for the proposed Public Works Operations Center Improvement Project. This project will improve and expand the existing Public Works Operations Facility through the demolition of an existing storage building and the construction of a new five bay shop, some covered parking areas, and paving and stormwater improvements on the site. Currently, this site is zoned parks and open space, and this would change the zone to the urban public zone. And this process for a zone change is spelled out in the La Center Municipal Code section eighteen thirty-one ten that requires a public hearing for both the Planning Commission and the City Council. We had the Planning Commission hearing last night, and at that meeting, they recommended that the council approve this zone change application. There is also some criteria in the La Center Municipal Code for approval of zone changes. I'll just briefly go over these. Zone change has to be consistent with federal and state law and statutory requirements. Has to be consistent with applicable goals of the comprehensive plan. It cannot increase in a, or decrease the level of service for capital facilities. It must be consistent with the population projections provided by the state. It must be in the, the public's interest. It must meet any locational criteria for the proposed district in the comprehensive plan. It must demonstrate that the conditions have substantially changed since the current zoning was applied, and I'll speak to that more in a second here. And the council, or the proposed zoning district must be allowed in the matrix that it was adopted by council. So we have, staff have reviewed all of those criteria, found that this zone change does meet all those criteria. And the, going back to comment seven there, the zone of parks and open space, we believe was applied to this parcel that the public, existing Public Works Operations Facility is on erroneously because the public, the Operations Center has been there and in use prior to the city having this parks and open space zoning criteria. And actually, the Parks and Open Space Zoning Code is not really a land use section of the code. It's, it's actually just talks about how residential subdivisions would actually dedicate parkland and are required to dedicate parkland, but there's no actual allowed uses, and it's not really a zoning category. So there's a process underway to sort of correct that error. But specifically for this project this evening, we are coming to the council for this zone change so that that project can move forward. I also want to mention that there will be a separate hearing before the hearings examiner. We were just talking about that at the last agenda item. But there will be a hearing before the hearings examiner for the site plan approval and the conditional use because government buildings are a conditional use in the urban public zone. As I mentioned, Planning Commission held a hearing last night. They recommended that this be adopted by the council. And so we are here before a council this evening requesting that the council hold a public hearing and then consider adoption of this ordinance. Happy to answer any questions there are, and after that, we'd recommend that you open the public hearing.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions for Brian?
Can you scroll down to the, to the map on there? I thought, I thought I saw a, and I can't find it right now on the Planning Commission website, but I thought I saw an overlay that was actually a Google map with the zoning change marked on it.
Yeah, so there's, this is the current zoning for the parcel, and the parcels in question, there's actually two of them. They form a rectangle. If we can go back to that zoning map here just briefly. So the, the big light green or dark green parcel there is Holly Park. And then there's sort of a long rectangle that's sort of zigzag divided into two. The proposal is to rezone both of those parcels. And those parcels will be combined as a part of the Public Works Facility operations because the, the work will actually just barely cross that property line. If we now go back to that exhibit, kind of shows the site plan for the project. And you can see there that building on the north side is the existing public workshop. It's proposed to remain. There's an existing storage building on the south side, sort of opposite of the shop that is proposed to be demolished and replaced with a five bay shop, sort of a smaller version of what's presently there across the way. And then proposed covered parking on each side of that, and then also covered parking coming off of the existing shop building as well.
Okay, do we have this electronically? I don't know where this came.
This is from the planning.
This is actually, the exhibit you're seeing here is part of the site plan that will be going to the hearings examiner as a part of that site plan approval and the conditional use permit.
Okay, I guess what I'm asking is I'd like to put that Google map overlay on the screen to look at.
Brian, he's talking about the map that you showed last night at the Planning Commission.
Yeah, so I think we actually just pulled up Clark County GIS. So I'm not sure if the clerk can do that real quick and turn on the aerial view. There was some discussion last night at Planning Commission about, you know, the potential impacts to the other amenities of Holly Park. Also some discussion about the fact that Holly Park, the whole park really should be in this urban public zone. Parks are in allowed use. Public parks are in allowed use in the urban public zone. Again, there are no allowed uses or uses at all that come with the Parks and Open Space Code. So at some point in the future, we'll come back and clean all that up. But yeah, get the Clark County GIS map pulled up for Holly Park there and the overlay, or the aerial photo, excuse me, turned on. That was what we were looking at last night.
Yeah, Brian, thank you, and I appreciate everything that you had put up there. We, I did have some questions by citizens about what could potentially be removed from the park if this project is done. And I think that it's, when you look at that GIS overlay, you see how much room is, is there. You know, yes, it's a steep hillside back there, but the, there's plenty of room to, to add that larger chop back there. It won't affect any of the, you know, the trail or the batting cages or whatever.
Yeah, so I think it's important to note that any expansion that's proposed with this project is all south, so going sort of away from Holly Park. And again, this operations facility is a government building, is a conditional use within the urban public zone. So, you know, hearings examiner has to review what we're doing, approve it. And if in the future we decide to do some other sort of changes or expansion to the Public Works Facility, we'd have to go through this process again and go to that public hearing with the hearings examiner. You can't, you know, you can't just sort of expand this in this zone without going through this public process and a public hearing before the hearings.
Yeah, and in the parcel there, the, the that long skinny building right there is the batting cage, the.
Yeah, maybe we can get the, go over to layers and turn on the most recent aerial photo. That kind of will show everything that's going on here.
Tracy actually has plans to put another batting cage there that's more user friendly as well. So there is no change to the park by.
It would be under that imagery. You got to expand that out and then click twenty twenty-three. There you go.
I just sent it to him.
So here you can see there, on the north side, the existing public workshop building. To the south of that, the sort of smaller building is the building that'll be demolished and where the new shop will go. And then, yeah, as was mentioned, the longer building there off to the east is the batting cages. So there, there's no proposed improvements sort of anywhere to the east of where that existing building is.
Okay.
That, that existing building that's being demolished.
Okay, thank you. I hope that makes it clear.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions for Brian?
But Brian, you're saying that the whole park needs to be rezoned as well into that urban public?
Yeah, so, and there was some discussion about this at Planning Commission, and I was, I kind of learned something actually in this as well. So with the, the subarea plan and the. So with the the subarea plan and the code reworks that are coming along with that, that was approved at the last council meeting. We are adding some language to the parks and open space code for, you know, if there's like a neighborhood park that a subdivision builds or something like that, that's, you know, you know, owned by the homeowners association or something like that. That will be falling under that parks and open space zone. However, public parks like Holly Park or any of the other parks the city owns really should fall under that urban public zone. And for whatever reason, back in, I think it was like twenty seventeen or eighteen or so, the zone was changed on all the parks to put them under the parks and open space code. And I'm not, tried to do some research to figure out what exactly happened there and weren't really able to to figure it out. But, you know, based on the way the current zoning is written, that urban public zone is really the correct zone for public parks. And again, parks aren't allowed use within that urban public zone and other government buildings like schools, operations center here or, you know, City Hall, something like that, anything that, you know, the city or another government agency is doing is a conditional use and has to go through this type three process in order to be located in that UP zone.
Answer your question? All right. Any other questions? All right. Yeah, I'm getting there. I was looking at the time there. At the time, seven thirty nine, I would now would like to open this up to the public hearing. If you'd like to make a comment, please keep this to ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero four. Please step up to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
Al Phillips, three six zero one six, Northwest Shandig Creek Road.
Yeah. Possibly put up the little screen that we had last night. You know, you, you see where the horseshoe is, of course, that's where the T-ball is remotely. And that's in that area. And then, of course, over there to the right, that takes in part of the ball field, you know, and I know I would feel comfortable if you left all that horseshoe thing and, you know, just made that area a little smaller. That way I wouldn't begin to think that maybe, you know, sometime down the road, you know, while we need to do this, that, and the other thing, and this is already changed. You know, maybe you're not going to use it now, but maybe you'll take it away later. I know that's a concern of some people with the baseball people. And this got brought to their attention. You know, I, I think they can make it smaller and approve it like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Kimberly Gohean Elbin again. Yeah, it looks like to be. Could we keep that up, please? Looks like to me that in the future, that they will take that little horseshoe area out. I mean, that's what it looks like to me. But then when you even even on this map here. So I don't think we can have that. I have a few questions. When were these buildings built? How long ago? How old are they? Was the property zoned at that time when they were built, parks and open space? And if so, was building there legal? So I'd like to know a little bit of history on this before we demolish or do anything pertaining to what I find very precious is our open space and our lands, especially for our children, right? My, my point is that it seems the town was not compliant and is not compliant. And I, in my opinion, they have business buildings on a park and open space land that's zoned that way. I don't know how it got through. So I want to know, how did they build on an open park and space? And I'd like to know the timeframes of these. So these are good questions that demonstrate democracy in our republic. I always like to mention that we are a republic that uses democracy. One of my main concerns, these are a few of them, I would be concerned for dust, debris, and any chemical use near the children at all. I know it was mentioned that they did a walk around the city and couldn't find a place to do this. Well, I think that's poor planning, don't you? There's houses right below behind there that they could have used. They could use some other place. But I consider it poor planning, and I think it might be something that we should be concerned about, especially with the two point O going in and all that, poor planning. Also on the reports, it always says, was in section two here, public interest. The Lassiter City Council finds that it is in the public interest to adopt the updated Lassiter zoning map. I'll tell you, folks, if you don't wake up, now, I love these people as a Christian would love people, but I can't respect the way that our government is going, and I'm only asking people to look at it closely, what's happening. There's people that only don't even live here, and they're asking us to keep our gem, our wonderful, precious natural resources alive here. And if we don't stand up now, they're going to be gone. Crossing off the eagle is part of what they did as a policy.
Thank you.
When governments change policy, watch out.
Any other public comments? Any callers calling in, please press star six to unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record, and please stick to ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero four. Okay. Seeing how there is no comment or further comments, I'd like to close the public comment period at seven forty five PM and turn this back over to council. Council? Do you have any questions, concern, comments, conversations amongst each other?
Well, my comment is that I came to that meeting last night on the Planning Commission, and they did an excellent job of explaining this in every little detail. Al was there, Kimberly was there on through via Zoom, and it was all explained to us. There's nothing taking over anything. We're not going to lose anything on that. Well, I have it here. I took a picture of it. We're not going to lose anything. It's and it was all explained. So I don't, I don't understand what the confusion is. If you're there at the meeting and you hear every detail of explaining it, there's nothing to be confused about.
Correct. Interpretation sometimes. You know, we're not going to change any of that. In fact, actually, this time next year, we were talking about looking at redoing the baseball fields and and squeezing in another softball field. And I explained that to the Planning Commission last night. So that'll be coming your way in the next year. Because the girls softball is overloaded. They need, they need another field. I mean, Councilmember Kasper is the president of the Little League here. He'll, he'll tell you. So, yeah, no, we we strive to work together with the school district and the Little League and all the the Arts Council and everybody else to work together to make this a better community. And by all means, we are not tearing out the the T-ball field unless we're going to make it better. Right? Both of our kids played on that T-ball field. To me, it was terrible. It needs to be looked at, and it needs to be redone and done correctly for the future generations that are coming up that want to play baseball. So that's what I have to say there. Or we can always just put it in a big swimming pool. You guys like that?
I second that.
That was for you, Jim. I don't know, Kimberly, I'm not sure what your question is or pertaining to it, but we don't have any chemical use or dust going on there. Of course, there are certain chemicals that are stored in the facility. But, you know, this is part of the growth of the facilities itself. We have so much equipment, and some of this equipment's extremely expensive. And storing it outside is actually costing taxpayers money, right? Because then we have not just damage, but equipment that's failing because of the weather. We don't exactly have an easy weather system here to to just leave stuff sitting outside and rust. The facility is long overdue. We did look all over the city. I told the Planning Commission this last night. We couldn't find anything under a million dollars. And that was without a building. So now you throw a million dollars piece of piece of property up there and then try to build the building. You know, you're talking another million dollars. Now you're into it for two million. When we took a look at this area and seen that we can actually put the building in the exact same place and just change a few things, it would fit it, and it saved everybody money, right, so that we can work on other projects. That is that about the gist of it, right, Tracy?
Yeah, what we're doing is we're keeping the new building in the same footprint of the old building. The only reason why this is being brought forward is because it was in the wrong zoning originally. And so when we, when we went to look at this to want to construct this building, we realized that the zoning was incorrect for our current facility. So we're just correcting the zoning and we're keeping the existing footprint in the footprint of the other building. We're just moving it fifteen feet to the south. We're staying within the fenced area so we can create a larger drive area between the two buildings for maneuverability.
And I want to address that as well, right? Just so you guys are aware of it. No mayor or city staff came and rezoned it wrong on purpose, right? There's different times, different circumstances, different things that were going on. You know, we're looking through all sorts of code that we call that needs to be redone or looked at. But twenty years ago, it was fine. So I just, I just want that on record because I don't need anybody to take and interpret it saying that, oh, my gosh, they did something wrong fifty years ago, and it was illegal. And no, that may not have been the case. Just wasn't zoned correctly to today.
I think just like what people's main concerns are, is that it looks like a large piece of property that is going to be overtaken by the city, which it's already all owned by the city, and the property lines are just not changing. They were always this way before. We've always had the same amount of authority to take over and demolish that part of the park if we wanted to, but that's not going to happen. So I think is what is happening here is we're using exactly the same space that was already available to us, but it has to be zoned differently.
Yeah. Does that sum it up? That pretty much sums it up.
Okay.
I'm so sorry. I did not hear that. If you, if you, we had the public comment is closed at this point in time, but I'll take your question, just just to appease. I will let Tracy answer that question. She's more of a, or Angie, they're more of an expert than I am at that.
I'm going to let Brian answer it because Brian is who's presenting.
Yes, sorry.
Thank you.
I don't see a smiling face here, so I forget sometimes. Sorry, Brian.
That's okay. Could you repeat the question because it wasn't on mic?
Yeah, if you can step up to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
I'm just curious because I know for the amount of housing that they put in there, it's also required to put so much green area or parks or something like that. Was that park actually accounted as part of the green area for like the housing development in that area? I mean, and then to reduce it after the fact, that might actually kind of throw the numbers out of whack, is kind of what I'm thinking. So I don't know.
Well, nobody's reducing the park.
No, you're not, but the usage area. I'm just saying, if you use that area as a park area, it kind of twords how many houses they could put in that development. And then all of a sudden, you reduce the amount of green areas that's left to the people and everything, because now you're using it for a different function. That throws all the numbers out of whack and everything. That's why I was just kind of curious. Those are those
Brian, I, if you could answer that.
Agreement.
Yes, yeah. So the the current parks and open space code went into effect, I believe, in twenty nineteen, which I think the Holly Park subdivision predates that. So they did not have the requirements to to dedicate parks and open space like a subdivision today would. This area that is just south of the shop is some, it's, you know, adjacent to a a green space, and there's a non-fish bearing seasonal creek in that area. And so it was sort of just open space that was dedicated to the city as a part of that subdivision. You know, all this has been taken into account through the critical areas study and report. There is some invasive species that are in that area that are going to be removed as part of this project as some mitigation. But to answer the the basic question, no, this, I don't believe that this area that, you know, the fifteen feet that were moving that building south was accounted for for, you know, required park dedication for the Holly Park subdivision.
That answer your question? Okay, thank you. That was a good question. Thank you. Council?
I have one more question. I want to try and make it quick. Since the goal is to eventually change the zoning of the whole park to the urban public versus what it's right now as as parks and open spaces. Does the urban public designation make it easier to or or put us in compliance so that we can expand certain facilities there? Like the baseball fields, additional batting cages, things that people want to do at that park? Or, because to me, I haven't read it, that's my fault, but the parks and open space zoning makes I would think that we could not build on that, and it would be, we'd be limited as to what can be modified, repaired, or placed on that property.
Yeah, and and that's a good point, Councilman Kasper. The the parks and open space, there is no allowed uses. It's really, again, just a code that talks about, you know, if you're building a subdivision, you have to dedicate a certain amount of parks and open space to the city as a part of your project. And that was something that was implemented back in twenty nineteen. And then again, for whatever reason, a lot of the parks were subsequently then rezoned to that parks and open space. But Holly Park should be zoned urban public. Ball fields, all the amenities that are in the park there are allowed uses in the urban public zone. So, you know, as the mayor mentioned, there's some discussion about improving the T-ball field there. The zoning would need to be changed for that work to have to actually take place too, and it would have to come into the urban public zone so that that work could take place. So again, eventually that we're going to be cleaning this up and, you know, sort of fixing that. And then we are also amending the parks and open space code to allow, you know, privately owned parks or green spaces that homeowners associations own to be continuing in that parks and open space zone. But hopefully that answers your question. There was just some, I think, some confusion back in the day when the when the new parks code was put in, and then people said, oh, well, we should zone, you know, we have a parks code. Now we should zone all the parks, parks, and it's, you know, the the right hand wasn't maybe talking to the left there. But the the Public Works Operations Facility, to address an earlier question, that building that's being demolished was built, I believe, in the mid seventies, and the newer shop was built in the early two thousands or late nineties. So both well prior to when the parks and open space code even existed in in the City's Municipal Code.
Thank you, Brian.
Any questions? Comments? Conversation?
Mayor, this is Janine. If I could just take a moment to piggyback on that?
Sure.
I just wanted to echo what Mr. Cast had said. I did take a look at this for Angie. We were looking at at sort of how this zoning code got sorted. And very oddly, I don't think your parks and open space, while it's called a zone, it is not listed as a zoning district in your zoning code. So I really think that back in twenty sixteen or seventeen or whenever this was formed, that that it's, it was misidentified as a zoning district of the city, like a commercial zone or another zone. Parks are usually a type of use that then is allowed or not allowed in different zones. And so it's, it's an oddity to me that this is a zone. And so Brian's proposal, and I've talked a bit with city staff about this as well, to to actually come up with a zone, which would be the urban public zone. And in that zone, address parks, I think it would give some added flexibility in what you could do with those parks. And then you could list in that zoning code update what things you wanted to allow to happen in parks or not. But those would be uses allowed in that underlying zone. So I think you're going to have a lot more flexibility. I honestly believe that it is a misnomer to call it a zone, but that is what it's called. And so we're going to try to just clean that up because it really is a type of use. So I hope that helps, and I am happy to answer any questions, but I fully support what Brian and Tracy have said.
Thank you, Tracy. Or thank you, Janine. Sorry. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh four, amending the city of a center zoning map.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2025-04, amending the city of a center's zoning map.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk, this is an ordinance. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Casper?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyle?
Yes.
Councilmember Leha?
Yes.
Councilmember Servini?
Yes.
Ordinance passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, everyone. All right. Council, do we have any unfinished business tonight?
I might.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if it's under unfinished business, but it's something that we talked about here back in 2022. I'm on the CTRAN board. I'm our representative for La Center, Yakal, and Ridgefield. And as part of the Board Composition Review Committee, the state has challenged CTRAN that our proportionality based on population is out of compliance. And it's comes at a very odd time because this, these board comps are supposed to meet every four years. And we're in the third year of that right now. So just, I feel, it's at an odd time, mainly, there's this big bridge that they're talking about going in that they're challenging us on this. So with that, I'm going to try and get CTRAN in here at our next meeting because we are going to have a Board Composition Review Committee meeting next, I think it's August, first Tuesday in August, whatever that is. And it'll be in lieu of the CTRAN Board of Directors meeting. Anyways, I can read the letter that was given to us from Washington State Department of Transportation yesterday and just kind of give you guys a little overlay of what's coming. But it is something that we need to address because if it's determined that we're out of compliance, then we could essentially lose one of our seats to another of the larger cities on the CTRAN.
And which city is that, just for the record?
What's that?
Which city?
The city of Vancouver and the county. It explains it a little bit in here, but I'll read it quickly. And we can Yeah, I I can't with full integrity, tell you the exact details of that. But I'll just kind of tell you what what this was giving us, given to us from the state, Washington State Department of Transportation. It was sent to Leanne Carver, the CEO. It says, Dear Ms. Carver, the recently signed into law engrossed substitute Senate Bill 5801, Section 1002 requires specific public transportation benefit areas, PTBAs, to certify they are in compliance with RCW 36.57A.050 as condition of receiving funding from grant programs listed in RCW 47.66. Required certification affects PTBAs serving populations of 400,000 or more that don't have a city within the PTBA boundary with a population of 75,000 or more operating a city transit system. We are notifying PTBAs affected by this new requirement to certify their compliance by October 1, 2025. We are currently in the process of creating the certification form. According to our analysis, your organization is out of compliance with the requirement to have proportional representation based on population on your board of directors. Your board is underrepresented by the city of Vancouver and the unincorporated portions of Clark County. Additionally, your board is overrepresented by cities with populations less than 30,000. Please take action to correct the proportional representation on your board to certify your compliance with RCW 37.57A.050 by October 1, and to continue receiving grant funding. So just my only other note, and it's signed by Molly Hughes, Acting Director of the Public Transportation Division. My only thing to note on that is back in November of 2022, I also served as the representative on the comp board committee, which is made up of representative from each city in the PTBA, one representative. So Vancouver gets one, Camas gets one, Battleground, so on and so forth. The county, however, does get their entire council is able to vote and be a part of the planning, I won't say Planning Commission, but Board Comp Committee. So we voted on this as a group back in 2022, and we had determined that our proportionality was, in fact, proportional based on our population, and everything was working fine. Submitted that to the state. They said nothing up until this point. So, like I said, coming at an odd time, but it is going to have to be addressed by, we're going to address it as a Board Composition Review Committee in August. And
I find it very ill timing, especially with what's going on on the CTRAN board. And some of the members on there, this, this is absolutely disgusting to actually hear, Councilmember. I'm sorry to say, I'm pretty disappointed. Has the board discussed any of this at your meetings?
Um, nothing that I can ex.
Is it executive session?
Besides this document, it was discussed in executive session.
Yeah. That's not good news. That means the little man gets squished again.
Yeah. I mean, there's hypotheticals of what could happen or couldn't happen. And it's going to be, you know, we'll just have to kind of try and come at it the best we can. But there'll be more things brought up about this. I'll try and have something for the next meeting and then report back after our board comp meeting in August.
Janine, are you still with us? She's still with us.
I am still with you. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. I've got a question. This is a hypothetical question. It may not be the most appropriate timing, but I'm kind of irritated right now. If the CTRAN board votes to bring seats down, and we, as the taxpayers, are still paying the bills for CTRAN, which lessens our vote, is there any legal recourse we would have against CTRAN or the state?
So what I'd like is a chance to look at that. And I had just sent you an email asking you if you would please send me a copy of that letter, because I would like to evaluate what they're relying on. And I would like to evaluate the statutes and kind of give you a report back on what your options are. But I I haven't looked at the PTBA statutes in a little while, and I wanted a chance to review that before I speak to it. But I am interested in helping.
Okay. Thank you, Janine. Thank you, Sean, or Councilmember. So for now, that's all I got. Any questions, comments? If you'd like to talk to me, Councilmember Boyle?
No, just thanks for your work on that. Yeah.
If any of the members of the audience would like to speak about the CTRAN, please see Councilmember Boyle after the meeting, please. Yes, please. Yes. Yeah, this is an unfinished business. Okay, great. Do we have any new business? Any new business at all? Okay. Yes.
I just want to bring this forward for all of us here. Darren is Seabike, Rob Sam. We have hundreds, hundreds of people coming in here. Please watch your children, watch the speed limit, and watch the traffic. I know that you men will work with helping everybody get their goodies. But remember, this is Seabike, Rob Sam.
Yes.
For the last 25 years, I don't know if one heck of a good day.
Thank you for the reminder, Mayor Irish. I do appreciate that. I was caught up in what had taken place two weeks ago to make that announcement. I do apologize. Okay, council, can I get a motion for German?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, everyone for attending. Alex, we good?